Item number three, public input. And I believe that we have Kelly Adams from Mothers Against Drug Driving. Welcome, Kelly. Please come on up to the podium.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Kelly Adams, and I'm a victim advocate in the state of Kansas for Mothers Against Drug Driving. So MAD, Mothers Against Drug Driving, we're still around. A lot of people don't realize that we're still around. But in Kansas, we have three full-time MAD employees that we serve the whole entire state of Kansas. Our goal at MAD is to end drug driving within our lifetime. We also have a mission to fight drug driving and underage drinking, and then also support the victims of these violent crimes that are affecting all the communities throughout the state of Kansas. MAD was founded in 1980, and we've been working hard fighting drug and drug driving since then. And we saw for a long time it decreased the amount of drug and drug driving cases and injuries and deaths associated with these violent crimes until COVID hit. And since COVID, we have noticed some trends, not only in the state of Kansas, but also nationally with increases in drug and drug driving. And we're seeing more cases of combinations of alcohol and various drugs. So we're kind of concerned about the way things have been going since COVID. One of our other missions at MAD is to support law enforcement officers who are on the front lines fighting drug and drug driving. And that's what brings me here tonight, is to honor one of the officers of the Linsburg Police Department. Derek Barton. It is my distinct pleasure and honor to present this award to Officer Bartlett. I used to be a training officer out of the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center because most students that came through here. Always been very impressed with him. And I'm so excited to see what he's been doing for the community.
Come on up, Derek.
The MAD Hero Award for the work that Officer Bartlett has done throughout 2020 and 2021, and what he continues to do even to this day. Mothers Against Drug Driving presents this award to Derek Barton of the Linsburg Police Department in appreciation for your never-ending efforts to keep our community safe by working to eliminate drug and drug driving, supporting the victims of these crimes, and working to prevent underage drinking. And it's signed by our program manager, Lori Marshall. Today stays. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. Without you and heroes like you, you could not keep our community safe. And the work that you're doing is very much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come up and have some of your time. And thank you for supporting your officers.
Thank you very much, Kelly, for being here tonight. We appreciate it very much. And thank you, Officer Bartlett, for all that you do. And we are very proud of you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or concerns?
Counsel, any questions? Yeah, Officer Bartlett, if you want to say something.
No, I just, thank you. I mean, these two things right here are why I work so hard on DUIs. So, and I guess my wife too. I enjoy doing it, so I'm just glad that I can help keeping everybody safe. That's ultimately the goal.
It is very important. Our statistics show that two out of three people will be affected by drunk or drug driving in their lifetime. And on average, before somebody stopped for impaired driving, they had driven 80 times before they'd gotten caught. We share the roads with hundreds of thousands of drunk drivers all the time. And without the dedicated tire incentives of law enforcement, we couldn't do our job. We're very thankful for all you do. Any objections?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Thank you for being here. And I told the chief that this is the safest place to be in town tonight. So thank you all. Next, we...
Barely have one more.
Have an additional...
Mr. Price?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Yes, come on up.
And Justice Brouck. And I have mitigating circumstances on my utility bill. And it's considering sewer water usage. And I use quite a bit of water on 34 or plenty of rain trees. And it's July and August if it doesn't rain. And I try my best not to use water if not needed. So I wait for the rain. If it doesn't rain, I water these trees with sulfur hoses. And it takes a lot of water to water 34 of them. And that is why these particular trees, if you want to research it yourself, they have to have water during the winter months as well. Or they will die, and most people lose their trees in those months because they don't realize those trees need water during the winter as well. Probably not as much because of the heat. But during November, December, I have to wait the sulfur hoses out and water these trees before the ground freezes. And so I wait to see what the weather's going to do. And sometimes it's dry for up into December sometime, like it was last year. And then I can bathe the sulfur hoses out and water them. Maybe more than I need to because I'm not really sure how much they need with the drought. But anyway, I was totally unaware that they based my sewer bill on the months of, I think, October to February, I believe it is. Is that right, Dave?
November, I agree.
November to February. I wasn't aware of that. And someone asked, "Well, didn't I read the newsletter?" I don't read the newsletter. I just pay my bills. But I wasn't aware of it, or I wouldn't have been watering after November. I would have been watering before November come around, for sure, because I didn't realize that they based my water use these for the rest of the year on those months, which my mitigating circumstances are is most people don't use water in the winter. But I do because of my trees. And I can show you the graphs. The water graphs are just bottomed out all the way across. And I could show somebody these graphs if they want to look at them. But you're familiar with the graphs. But they're almost bottomed out all the way across the line because I'm a single person. And I don't use hardly any water. I do laundry once a week, and I got efficient washing machine, and I had no watering. But I thought to myself, my highest my sewer bill has ever been has been $22. For 15 years I've lived there, that's the highest it's ever been. And all of a sudden, it's $46. Well, I was talking to a gentleman, and he said, I said, "Why was this just now coming up?" And I said, "Is it because of the new format of the new water bills?" Because they've changed them twice. And I thought, "Well, perhaps it was because of the format." And he said, "No, it wasn't because of the format of the bills. It's just..." And they said, "Well, probably the last 14 years, they just passed it off as a water week, you know, in them months." And I thought, "No, it's because of water to trees." And I can show you graphs for three years here.
Mr. Price, how much did you... So you're, what you're saying is that in November and December, you used a lot of water?
Because the water...
And that caused sewer bill to increase?
Right. And that water, they said, "Well, how do we know that that water didn't go in the sewer?" Well, I can prove it here with these graphs. Because I didn't use it until November. It went into the trees, the water to trees. There's no way anybody could possibly, they'd have to have 10 people in their family to use that water.
Is it your understanding that the... And I understand what you're saying is I use a lot of water, and that's not fair that that...
No.
Okay, but all right. But if the way that it is calculated, do you see any discrepancy in what the additional water you... The additional water you use since you use it at the end of the year under the new system or the system that has been adopted by the city, that caused your water bill to go up? Did that, does that make sense? I'm not asking you if you... I understand what your complaint is, I think. But you're not... Does it calculate out correctly? Or maybe I should be asking David this. David, is there a... What I'm wanting to know is, assuming he wasn't complaining about he used water to water trees, would it make sense on the bill? Is that...
Yes, it's calculated correctly. I did the calculation by hand just to verify and make sure that it was accurate. And it's accurate based off his average consumption for the months of November, December, January, February.
Okay, so that's clearly that what your position is, that you used a lot of water.
Yeah, the water did not go into the sewer. It went into the ground. And if you would be willing to look at just a couple of these, you could verify that. Because it's the same thing with every one of these. Around January, I mean, around July, when it's real hot and it doesn't rain, you can see the bar goes up. And then in October and December, the bars go up because our water goes... I mean, July, it doesn't calculate, it doesn't matter in July or August or November. And from October to March, it does. That water went into the ground. It did not go into the sewer. And so I'm going to have to pay for the next 12 months for sewer. It's not Justice Brouck, and it's not fair. I know they say, "Well, you know, if we do it for you, we'll do it for everybody." But I have mitigating circumstances because the water did not go into the sewer. So I'm going to have to pay for 12 months. And believe me, from now on, I'm not going to water before October. It won't happen again. If I would have been aware of it, I wouldn't have been watering my trees after October.
So what you're asking for basically is the sewer part to be adjusted there?
Right.
For the next 10 months or eight months or whatever it is.
And also, when I do water those trees, it costs me dearly. I mean, it costs a lot. But I don't like fences. I planted them. I didn't, I wasn't aware of all the labor and expense that was going to go into evolving them. Or I would have put a wood fence up. But it's neither here nor there. But the water, sometimes my water bill was $160. I paid for that water. But the sewer is a different story. It didn't go in the sewer. It went into the ground. I'm already paying dearly for the water. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, I understand. And I believe that we have some information or any of the David has correct on this. So let's, I'll tell you what, if you stay here for a minute, we'll see. Does the counsel, any council members have any specific question?
I just have a question as to, is there someone that can answer? Why do we base the sewer rate off of three months, November, December, January? I mean, what is that?
So those have historically been what we consider dead months. And there's, we don't have a, your sewer is not billed on your usage per month. There's an ordinance that states basically that your sewer is based off of the dead months of November, December, January, February. That's how our system is set up to do it based off that. And again, historically, that's the way to be consistent across the board for everybody so that we make sure that there's consistency. That's the only consistency I guess I'm seeing we would have is by having certain months.
Because you're trying to figure out an average for sewer, not for water usage. And that would be a period in which, let's pick these months to kind of figure sewer usage.
Because most people are not watering their yards or anything like that with the exception of depending on the weather, obviously.
But in my case, I have to water in that winter months, in my case. And I just assumed, which was wrong, that when I paid my KPNL bill, it was for that month. When I paid the water bill, which I paid, it was that month. And I just assumed the sewer. Everything on my utility bill was for that month. I wasn't aware of, my ignorance, excuse me, but I wasn't aware that they based the sewer like that. I didn't want it dry.
I can appreciate that, but I can also assure you in a dry year like we have going into the fall, that there were many watering their lawns and other things during that time period for the very same reason, including myself. So I was unaware also that my water usage or my sewer rate is used off of that. But there were sprinkler systems used in during those months. So that is something to be considered, and I don't know how that...
And I apologize for that. Like I said, like I told David, I said I wasn't aware of that. I wouldn't have been watering after November. I would have watered before, which makes it difficult because I wait as long as I can because that water's got to last its trees through the winter. I could have, but now I'll have to start watering them before. I'll have to watering late October so I won't fall into this trap again. But I just couldn't see paying $46 for sewage. And you know, I know 18 of it's going to be mine because a certain percent of it is mine anyway. Because like I said, my highest sewer bill is, since I've lived there 15 years, has only been 22. On an average, it's been $18 a month. And so the water didn't go into the sewer, is what I'm saying. And I'm not going to fall into this again. I was just wanting some justice in this. And if they could reevaluate this and at least cut it in half or go back and say, "Well, what was his highest sewer bill in the 15 years?" And then base it off of that for this time around? That's...
Thank you, Mr. Price. And I can tell you that I know that, in fact, we appreciate you coming to the meeting this evening. And I know that our administrator can continue that discussion.
I appreciate it. Because like, now when I do water my trees, because of the extra, it's really going to cost me. Because it is expensive to water. Paying my water bill plus the extra sewer bill is going to be a burden.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate giving this time. Thank you.
Administrator, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, we will next turn our attention to item number five, which is the mayor's report. And we have some proclamations this evening. And we're going to begin with the firefighters' proclamation. One, no, 1998, there was a large wildfire in Australia. It got the attention of the entire world. And firefighters lost their lives. This is what led to this proclamation going across the world. Whereas the demands of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical sacrifices that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others, I do hereby proclaim the day of May the 4th as International Firefighters' Day. And I encourage all citizens to show support and appreciation to our firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year and by remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. We thank all of our firefighters in our city, in our communities. Second, we have a proclamation for law enforcement. And in 1962, President Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. So we honor the memory of those heroes who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize all those who put themselves at risk every day in order to provide vital public service in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. Therefore, I hereby proclaim May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 15th through 21st as Law Enforcement Week. And thank you. And we have, I'm glad we have our officers here still. And thank you all very much for the job that you do in creating a safe community. And as I've said before, now is not a particularly easy time to be in law enforcement. And we recognize that. Thank you very much. Thirdly, we have a municipal clerks' week. Whereas the office of, office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, it provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Therefore, I recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th as Professional Municipal Clerks' Week and further extend our appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Roxy Shugman. Thank you, Roxy. I was, I was a little distressed though that when I discovered that the association that does these proclamations has been along, has been around longer than Roxy has. So anyway, thank you. Next, we have National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas these infrastructures that we have, facilities and services, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are federally mandated first responders and engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. I do hereby designate the week, May 15th through 21st, as National Public Works Week. And we thank you, city employees that are here. Thank you, Chris, and for all that you do. We take our infrastructure for granted sometimes until they're not there. And then we wonder what happens. So thank you so much, all of you, for the great job that you do. Next, we have National Travel and Tourism Week. The travel industry is the 12th largest employer in the state of Kansas, directly supporting more than 53,000 jobs. Tourism is the welcome committee for capital investment in Kansas. I do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th as National Travel and Tourism Week in Kansas and urge the citizens of Kansas to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. Thank you, Holly, and your group for all that you do. And next, we have a proclamation for Day of Prayer. And the proclamation is a national proclamation that was first signed by Harry Truman and has continued by every president since, including last year. President Joe Biden said, "I join all people of faith in prayers for spiritual guidance, mercy, and protection." Whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952 and signed by Harry Truman in 1952. I do hereby proclaim May 5th as a day of prayer throughout our city. National Skilled Nursing Care Week. Whereas we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities who reside in skilled nursing care centers in Linsburg, I declare the week of May 8th to 14th as National Skilled Nursing Care Week, a week to honor the important role that skilled nursing care centers provide in caring for and protecting our most vulnerable citizens. And as I'm sure we all know, we have wonderful facilities here in Linsburg. And we're very proud of all of those people who work in those positions. And I do think we are scheduled to meet with them later this week to retire the proclamation to them. So thank you, counsel. That covers our proclamations for this evening. And we will next turn our attention to item number six, the Consent Agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 18th, the payroll ordinance, and the purchase order ordinance. These items are routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Summit.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Second, is there discussion on the motion? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Seeing no discussion, our clerk will call, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Peterson?
abstain.
Martin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebo?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Thank you. The tally is five yes votes, one abstention. The motion passes. We will next turn our attention to item number seven, which is appointments. And we have an appointment regarding the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Holly, did you want to say anything? Or do you just...
I think it's pretty explanatory. We try very, we try very hard. State statute requires us to have a majority of lodging and managers or owners to sit on our board. That's very difficult on a board of 10 in a community this size. So we try our very best at it. So Taisha Beckman has agreed to step forward and to serve on this board representing Linsburg Vacation Rentals. I think she'll provide some really good creative ideas for us as well as some good feedback as to what our vacation rentals are able to provide for us in our community and what they need from us, so.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Holly. Taisha will indeed do a great job. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of Taisha Beckman serving on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed no. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes do have it. Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Do we have a plan in its own? Yes, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me, good evening, counsel. The planning and zoning commission met on Tuesday, April 26th at 6:00 p.m. There were two items on the agenda. The first was two lock split proposals at Stockholm Estates. It's the two tail rooms on Delta Drive. Those were proposed and approved. The second agenda item was the front yard fence height variance, which keeps coming back. A motion was made to rescind the prior motion to recommend a change based on the issue that we had discussed earlier, being that the ordinance that's printed is different than the one that is on UNICOD online. So they're going to reconsider that at the next meeting and vote on a motion to potentially amend that section of the code. And that's it.
Questions for Jordan? Seeing no questions, thank you. We will now turn our attention to old business. Madam Administrator, we have mail business.
We do not.
Thank you. Number 10, new business, calling Beth Ferguson for item A, Midsummer's Late Night Swim.
Good evening. Today is one month until our swimming pool opens. And so we are starting to get excited towards that. And I, along with Geneva Hay, would like to present the Midsummer's Committee has requested a midnight swim the evening of June 11th at the Linsburg Pool from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. This would allow for the swimming pool to be open late night as well as free to the public. This has been a part of Midsummer's for many years. Last year, I believe, there was over 400 people. We did not have it the previous year, and I think it was around 520 the year before that. So it is something that people enjoy and definitely use. So my recommendation is to approve the Midsummer's Committee request for a free swim at the Linsburg Municipal Pool from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 11th, and that there be no charge to the Midsummer Committee or anyone using the pool that evening.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Seeing no questions, thank you, Beth. I would entertain a motion for Midsummer's Late Night Swim on June 11th.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes do have it. And we will turn our attention to item B, Farmers Market, Noah. And Weekly Seasonal Farmers Market, eight through October.
Welcome. Good evening, council mayor. So a group has requested the use of Swenson Park as a market set up beginning as soon as May fourteenth of this year. Anticipated operation of the market will be Saturday mornings through October. Yellow background, warrant number five-two-four-seven was adopted in August of two thousand twenty allowing seasonal farmers, farmer markets to operate in city parks. Under section five-zero dash eight-seven-seven, seasonal or farmers, or farmer market, farmer's market may be permitted in any of this commercial or industrial zones providing such market conforms to all setback, site distances and other applicable zoning traffic regulations. Such markets shall be further subject to any city administrative regulations as well. Additionally, with a specific permission renewed annually by city council, such markets are allowed in city parks provided conform to all setback, site distances and other zoning traffic regulations. So the park department recommends a motion to approve the request to conduct a weekly seasonal farmers market in Swenson Park for the year of two thousand twenty-two.
Looking to other questions for now. Seeing no questions, thank you, all. That's a popular event. Council would entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes do have it. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item C. And go on, Chris, then, Holly. Talking about water. Water is a constant subject, it seems like. Good evening, Mayor, council. Before you this evening, we have some proposals to replace our water telemetry system. This was a system that was installed shortly after the new well fields were put into place back in the nineties. The original system that was there was a hardwired system and they found it failed pretty quickly after the well field was put into service due to just connection issues and it was all hardwired. So it was miles and miles online and it was very problematic. So they went out and they found a company that put this radio system in. And the, the system's worked fairly well throughout the years, but it is twenty-two years old and it is starting to have more and more issues. We do continually have issues with radios and replaced several radios throughout the year. So several years ago, I started looking at this and so this has been the C I P for many years now. To go along with this, this is also part of a plan for moving the water system, the water department out to wastewater plant that has happened. They are working out to the wastewater plant now. But the water telemetry system still sits within the Public Works Building. So we need to move that out there as well. We also need to upgrade the wastewater data computer, which was supposed to be done last year, but due to some increases and upgrades that needed to be done, it came in way over budget. So we moved that out to this year and then just worked the whole package into combining everything together, tying the system together, which actually saved some money to do that that way. So we contacted our current systems integrator, which is Ari Pedrati, and we contacted Microcom, which also had a proposal in for the original data system at the wastewater plant that upgraded down in two thousand ten. And then we also contacted another company out of Lincoln, Nebraska called HOA Solutions. All three of these companies were very professional. They're very knowledgeable and I think any one of them does a fantastic job of what they do. Any interactions I've had with any systems providers, they all seem to do an outstanding job of what their business is and they're, they're able to accommodate many different things and make systems work really well. So we wanted to look at upgrading this system, getting to a newer system, some, some more modern electronics. We talked to the original radio company that we, we have now and asked them what they would do different if they built a new system. They don't do anything different. It's the same exact system that they built twenty-two years ago. It is a very functional system, but it was designed to work out in the middle of nowhere. It's very basic and it doesn't add a lot of bells and whistles to it. So we wanted to get some newer components in the system and they're again tying it with the new system at the skate, or the skate system at the wastewater plant. There's a lot that they could do to it, a lot that they could give us and make it a more functional system. So each one of those companies put together a proposal and they're very similar in, in the concept of how they work, how they're designed, how they like, they're laid out. They are a little different in how they, or how they come from their electronics. Some of them outsource and build the system with manufactured electronics, which leaves it at the mercy of those companies, those electronics being upgraded and they have no control over that. So that can be costly at some times. We found that Microcom builds a lot of their components. They, they deal with a lot of stuff in-house as far as the manufacturing of some of these radio components and the systems, which kind of offsets some of those continual increases in prices to software upgrades and those different things that are other concern to us. The operators in both wastewater and water contacted several different municipalities, talked to them about their systems. Nobody really has anything bad to say about any of them. They're all good companies. They all respond to any issues. Of course, today with electronics, you can get online and you can fix a lot of problems that way and they're all very pleased with them. So we felt after all these discussions that Microcom probably is a good fit for what we're trying to accomplish and therefore we're going to recommend a motion to approve the quote from Microcom Inc. for the components and installation of the new combination water telemetry system and wastewater data upgrade for one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris on the council?
I'd just like to thank you for teaching me the word telemetry. I did not know. It's my first time, so.
Just thinking in terms of twenty-two years, and our insistence that it be in play, is there a lifespan associated with this?
Twenty-two years seem to fit for the one. You know, you're, you're dealing with multiple components. You're dealing with some of the electronics. Those can tend to have a longer life. The software, that's upgraded every, typically every five to seven years. The computer themselves, we're on a five-year rotation. We always have been. There again too, with the environment they're, they're operating in, subject to lightning, subject to corrosion. I would expect to achieve the same kind of lifespan out of the component part of it. The software is always being upgraded and changed and I think.
There are going to be ongoing costs associated with everything we do.
Correct, correct. These, Microcom has a lot less ongoing expense because of how they're set up and designed and, and they don't deal with the outside dangers as much as the other companies do. So. Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, council, would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the quote from Microcom Incorporated for the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have the city clerk call, roll call vote, please.
Council members Presley.
Yes.
Corwin.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Eagle.
Yes.
Tally is six affirmative and zero against. The motion passes. Thank you, council. And that brings us to item eleven. I do not believe that we have a need for executive session. Do we have any additional business to come before the council? Okay, our madam administrator?
I wanted to mention that on May twenty-second, there will be an open house from three to six P M. at the Linsburg Child Development Center. Our assistant city administrator, Lucas Neese, has worked very hard on this project as well as all of those involved and we wish to show off the finished project to the community, almost finished project, and to thank all of those who have had a hand in it. Lucas, if you would like to say anything else, now is the time.
It, it's a beautiful facility that, that hopefully will serve the community very well and we're excited to have people. There won't be a lot of opportunities to be inside if you don't have kids. This is a great opportunity to come and see it and hopefully understand what, what people have been talking about for three years.
Thank you, Lucas. And May twenty-second, what time?
May twenty-second from three to six P M.
Three to six o'clock. Okay. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further business to become, to come before the council. I will remind the council that we are, after a two or three minute break, we will continue our study session. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We will adjourn.
So a second, all in favor, seeing no saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will see you in just a couple of minutes, council.